Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you to our March 28, 2023 Board of Education Meeting. We are calling the meeting to order at 7:04 PM. And if everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A reading of the meeting notice. This meeting is being conducted in compliance with the open meeting session that the Verona Board of Education passed a resolution at its annual reorganization meeting held on January 3, 2023. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, the Verona Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published in the Star Ledger, posted with the Township of Verona and the Verona Education Association. Postings of this meeting setting forth the time, location, and agenda were posted at the Verona Board of Education office and on the Verona Public Schools District website. Copies of tonight's agenda and resolutions have been made available to the public via the Board of Education website. Mr. Cruz, if you can please call attendance.
Sure. Mr. Walker? Mrs. Verzala? Mrs. Farrar?
Yeah.
Mrs. Prisco?
Here.
Mrs. Freshen?
Here.
We have Cora. Thank you.
Thank you. This evening, we do not have any presentations, so we will move right into the superintendent's report by Mrs. D Giuseppe.
Good evening. So I just want to start out my comments tonight by sending our thoughts and prayers to the national community after the tragedy that they experienced there with regard to Covenant Schools shooting yesterday. And along those lines, we'll have a discussion later tonight among the board with regard to something that was on our agenda regardless of what happened yesterday about gun safety. So there's a movement and Mrs. Freshy shared with me the work that the New Jersey School Boards did on their task force, and I shared it with you. It's as Mr. Walker brought up to me today, realize it was that long of a document. It's a very long document. I don't expect that you read through all of it, but there are sample resolutions in there. And I had a very good conversation with Chief Kieran, who also is in favor of having the board speak about potentially passing a resolution on gun safety. This is different than gun control. So while we know gun control is a very politicized issue, gun safety is a nonpartisan issue that's supported by all branches of government and the police themselves and parents and communities. So I think that conversation is right to have today if we can later on. So a couple of things that have been going on that are much lighter than the tragedy in Nashville. We have had History Day last week at Seton Hall. Our HBW students went to part and did very, very well. And I had been invited back to and to the next round. We attended several of us, Mrs. Fresky, Mrs. Prisco, and Mrs. Farrar, and I all attended the Essex County Unsung Heroes Awards where we honored Jude Ford, a high school senior, and Mr. Cogdill was there to speak on his behalf. That was my first time at an Unsung Heroes event, and it was really lovely to hear the wonderful things that are happening about our students across Essex County. And just this past weekend, I had the luck to attend with our Verona High School marching band and choir their performances in Walt Disney World. And what makes that special is I didn't realize that when you apply to go, they can accept you and tell you you can come for the festivities, but we're not going to have you march or sing. The fact that our district was not only invited to come for the festivities, but also asked to march on Main Street and sing down, not downtown, I'm aging myself, Disney Springs was really wonderful. And I know, Mrs. Fresky, I think you asked last meeting, do they go every year? They go every, once every four years? That way, every student that's on the band, in the band for four years, has an opportunity to go and do this once in a lifetime opportunity for them to march as the, they were considered the professional band that day at Walt Disney World. And they did a fantastic job. I was so impressed and so proud. And I just also want to give a little shout out to the behind the scenes folks there. So Mr. Lynch and Mrs. Neville and Mr. Robleski, who did the planning, and then Mr. Tamboro and Mrs. Barone and Mrs. Palmer, Nurse Palmer from the middle school, and the parents that came as chaperones. What a well-oiled machine. It was flawless. So to everybody involved in that, the students had a great time. The weather was beautiful. And thanks to everyone who made that historic event for our kids. So we spoke last meeting a little bit about looking at updating the grade five, six schedule at HBW to create more teaching time for our core subject areas. And we met with Mr. Galbacheck, Mr. Lancaster, and Mrs. Ackerman, and the curriculum department and I all met. We are still moving forward with this. It is not going to be possible to do for September 2023. There's too much, too many moving parts to be ready and do it well in that, in that time period. So we may make some tweaks to the fifth grade schedule right away that can net us some, some better, more quality time. But we will be moving forward with some more significant changes for September 2024. And we have our last strategic planning on April 23, and that, I'm sorry, April 28, no, it says 23, April 28. That is destiny by design. This is the goal-setting portion of that third and final planning meeting. This is where the heavy lifting is done. So looking forward to that as well. I think 27th. It is April 27.
It is April 27.
Okay. 23rd in this. So that's my report for this evening.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on to the Board Secretary Report by Mr. Cruz.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. No, that's definitely a busy time of the year as we, one of the things we're finishing off a bunch of preparations, but then also approaching the end of a spectacular school year. So I definitely excited about that. And it's so much to do and so little time. Today's report, I only have a small update. I just want to give everyone an update on the budget development process currently. The last board meeting, the board approved the preliminary budget for 2324. It's currently being reviewed by the County Superintendent Office. So I anticipate that we will have the approval sometime by the end of this week or early next week. Right after that, we will be posting the advertisement publicly. It will appear at the Star Ledger. The public hearing will be held on Tuesday, April 25. And I'll continue to work closely with Superintendent Giuseppe and along with the Finance Committee on the budgeting process and look forward to adopt this budget for the new school year. This concludes my report for today. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cruz. Next, we will go on to our Student Representative Report. Reese Shado. Thank you, Reese.
Yeah. So first off, congratulations to Jude Ford for being honored as one of Essex County's unsung heroes. So that award specifically recognizes students who've made positive contributions to their school and community, even though they like, may not have received like traditional recognition or accolades in the past, but they have made an important impact in their community. So congratulations to him for being recognized there. Also, congratulations to Sarah Bosco, Christopher Sluck, and Griffin Reel for receiving verbal commendations, and to Zoe Levine for winning an honorable mention award at the North Brunswick Model United Nations Conference last Saturday. And on the band trip that ran from last week until this Sunday, so as Miss D Giuseppe said, students did an outstanding job performing from what I've seen of the clips and videos online. And yeah, it's a great opportunity and great chance for kids there. And the boys lacrosse team also took an overnight trip last week to Baltimore, Maryland, to visit the Lacrosse Hall of Fame as well. And on that note, spring sports started up on March 16. So that's golf, lacrosse, baseball, softball track. Those are all in full swing. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you so much. Now, we're going to
Can I ask one question based on the superintendent report? The superintendent, the plan with, or the potential plan for the middle school schedule change, if it means that the core subjects are getting more class time, A, will that mean that other subjects are going to be getting less, or will there be any fiscal impact on this? We might have to pay teachers more if they're teaching for a longer period of time?
It's a good question. The proposed schedule changes that we have don't impact the core teaching schedules, just because right now they're following a middle school schedule. And we wouldn't need them to do that. They'd be following more of an elementary schedule in fifth grade. So the teachers, rather than needing seven English teachers, you'll need fewer English teachers, but they would teach longer periods. So it will balance out. There's a potential that this model may actually lead to a reduction in force in some ways. We're not sure yet. We haven't done enough to research that.
And if possible, we could even use that potential reduction for the beginning of a BSI program or something if we wanted to, correct?
Yes. Yeah. Or we could, because our, our staff, but grades five, six are also elementary certified, most of them, to bolster some of our, lower some of our class sizes, the elementary and be, you know, money neutral.
Excellent. Yeah. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions? Thank you. We'll move on to our committee reports. First up is education. I believe you ladies met.
Okay, so we did, we had an opportunity to meet last week. So we'll start with special services. The ESL testing was completed for the school year. So that is just an assessment that is provided to all of our students to see their growth throughout the year. So that was all completed. As far as community relations goes, we had several inquiries regarding the life skills board of ed presentation that was presented last time. So community, you know, the community has been kind of reaching out, asking the questions that were, that they had there around that program. We are a special education program currently working on offering interventions to students who need support, particularly at the elementary level. The hope is instead of referring straight to CST, that we're kind of going in and getting those interventions in places needed. So we are working on that for the 2324 school year. So I'm personally very happy to hear that. We are also working, they're finalizing space for the life skills program. So as was noted at last meeting's presentation, really, Tonya was just looking for space with running water. So they are in the process of finishing that up. Teachers who are going to be working in the life skills program are going to be visiting other districts, which I think is also wonderful. They're visiting West Essex on April 3, I'm sorry, West Essex on April 2, West Orange, April 3. The extended school year invitations have been out, have been sent out to all students who were invited to participate, and staffing is underway for that. As far as going back to those intervention programs, they're also planning a reading intervention program over the summer for selected students. So there'll be two, two different types of interventions there. And let's see, regarding home instruction, continued collaboration with guidance to develop a more district-wide home instruction, home instruction procedures, K-12. Right now, we are currently, we've spoken about this in prior meetings. We're currently using effective school solutions for our tier three mental health services. In the 2324 school year, we're going to be switching over to Care Plus, which is a new company. All of those transitions, that communication has also been sent out to families. Let's see. Around budgeting, this is still in special services, around budgeting, all the priorities for the 2324. I'm sorry, the priorities for the 2324, or life skills for the LLD program, and the additional staff that will be required for that. As far as the elementary school, the priority is for an ICS model expansion, right? So it's more looking to have more inclusion in the classroom, where teachers are pushing in to provide those services to students who need additional support rather than pulling them out of the classrooms. And then, this is not necessarily for the 2324 school year, but starting to discuss scheduling shifts that could support these types of services without additional costs. So that goes possibly to the middle school model, but also just at the elementary level itself. Gen N, Curriculum Council is shifting to in-person. So they will not be meeting via Zoom anymore. So that's a, that's a win. The next Curriculum Council meeting, for anyone who's interested, is Wednesday, April 19, 2023, at 3:15. There are new classes that are being surveyed right now for the 2324 school year at the high school. So those surveys were sent out. And then the next steps there is to kind of gauge interest, and then curriculum writing will be proposed to the board, and then we'll go from there again, depending on interest for those electives. With respect to DEI and B, that committee is currently working on an equity statement for the district. The next meeting is scheduled for Monday, April 3 at 7:00 PM. For standardized testing, there's no more Start Strong. So that is a win. Yep. So one less standardized test. NJGPA, the field tests were completed. That is the graduation proficiency assessment. So juniors are taking that for this year. It was just a field test. So that really is just going to be implemented for next year. The NJSLA calendar for HBW and the Verona High School was updated around the Give Back Days for snow days. So you may see some shifts in the testing schedules for that. Hiring, Dr. Miller had, is going to be, I'm sorry, met with students at TCNJ and Monmouth University earlier this month. And then the upcoming fairs are going to be from Montclair State and TCNJ. So again, that is just, you know, going out to meet new talent for potential hires. With respect to professional development support, we're continuing to work with Ms. Clark from Gravity Goldberg, which is a literary consultant. She was in FN Brown doing some coaching sessions still around writing. And then she also met with the elementary and middle school and high school teachers to discuss windows, mirrors, and sliding doors, which is the way in which texts and literature can help with culturally responsive pedagogy. Next, District Professional Development will be March 31, and that will be turnkeying for NJSLA. It's not as much fun. New Teacher Academy is continuing. Mr. Merkler and Mr. Lancaster led a session on March 23, which is around problem solving for our new teachers. And then, as Misty Giuseppe mentioned, we have our strategic planning. Next meeting on that is April 27. And the theme is destiny by design.
Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I do. I got two questions. So the first one is, and I think this is what you and I talked about earlier, and what you alluded to earlier, like, when you say home instruction, are you referring to like the mandatory bedside instruction in case a kid's like, you know, gets a broken leg, or, or, you know, or were you referring to like, if a kid's sick, they'll have the ability to view in from home like they did during the pandemic?
So that, we didn't, in this committee meeting, we didn't speak to going in virtually or working. And this was more of just, I think, like district-wide procedures for all home instruction.
Very good. And then the second question, some superintendent might be able to shed light. And I know, like, the new life skills program, so I think it's a cool program, but it's, I could see how it might be challenging the first year to get parents to buy in. How, how are we getting as far as enrollment or parent reception to sending their kids into a kind of a brand new program?
In other districts, that might be a hard sell, but the parents in this district have been asking for that program for several years. So actually, we're kind of thrilled that it was coming. But what we would do is case managers would reach out to students that are in out-of-district placements and make the offer for them to return to district. Or students that are currently in the eighth grade, moving into the high school, that have been looking at out-of-district placements, case managers do some work talking to them about what the program's going to look like. So it's very important that they go out and see what other programs look like and, and are able to know what we can do here so they can accurately describe that to parents and students, so that it's not, you know, like a shell game, right? We don't want Three Card Monte. We want to be able to actually say that. But the, the good news is, Mrs. Simmons started a program in West Essex, and is very well-versed at starting multiple programs and kind of knows how to roll it out. I think we're lucky in that our parents of that population of students that would benefit from that program, really were well-vested in bringing it here.
Thank you. Much encouraging. That's it for me.
Thank you. Does anyone have any other questions? Thank you for that report.
I'm sorry. Real quick. So the, could you elaborate on the NJ Start Strong changes in that?
NJ Start Strong was those tests that you all took in like September, October, and they apparently didn't really correlate to anything. You know, we had kids. But, okay, I shouldn't say that. But they, they were to assess learning loss, particularly during COVID. And so now, we're two years back. So we're, we're kind of phasing those out, or are phasing those out, and getting that, that instruction time back, which I think is very important.
Yes. So Start Strong was actually brought in prior to COVID as a pilot, and as a snapshot for, for teachers to know where their, what their students learned the prior year. So they could build on which students had the tiered classrooms, had a differentiated instruction, and it was never mandatory. And then, post-COVID, after we didn't have any NJSLA test results, they mandated, the state mandated Start Strong as a way for the state to collect data on learning loss. So it's not what it was designed for, but it was what it was being used for. And many districts like Verona have our own map testing, which we don't really need Start Strong, because we do our own internal testing three times a year, at least in grades one to eight. And next year, we'll also be testing grade nine. So we have that internal data. So the state recognized that many districts don't need Start Strong in order to gather that information. And the state now has NJSLA. So they don't need that information anymore. So it will become optional again.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Reese. Thank you. Diana, would you be able to report on finance? Do you have my notes?
Education is a tough This is why we're geared up. So that's right. I hope it is long. Okay. So, yeah, the finance was quick. So we just touched base again on the residency verifications that we've been working on. And the verifications all came back okay. One thing that is important to note is that we learned that, that the district is collaborating with the Verona Police Department when working with, with resident, with resident verifications, but addresses. Purchasing deadline has passed. So at this point, there aren't any other, you know, new purchase that, purchases that we should be seeing, with the exception, of course, of any emergency purchases that could come down the pipeline. Brown and Brown, which is our insurance vendor, confirmed the 8.96 increase for insurance for the 2324 school year. During the next, I think it's the next Finance Committee, the Brown and Brown representative is going to come and meet with us for, for drawing Finance Committee to explain and go over benefits and increases and things of that nature. So we'll be able to report back on that and ask any questions that we may have. And then that was it, because Jorge reported on the county super rule.
Any questions? Thank you. Anyone have any questions, comments?
So for the residency verification, so we verified that there's no students currently attending Verona schools that shouldn't be. Is that what?
There, there were, so currently, there are one, one investigation, and then there's potentially another one. So it's, it's definitely like peeling an onion. So, and it's actually a great practice. And I think this is something that we'll continue doing yearly. Because I think as a resident, no one wants, you know, as a taxpayer here in Verona, no one wants kind of like a free ride. That's the reason why we have the non-resident tuition posted and option for families that do move away and still want to actually keep their students engaged in our schools. So that's one of the things that we're doing. And in the case of an investigation where it's found that that family is no longer Verona, then basically, the option is going to be there to, to actually stay enrolled, but add, add a tuition.
All right. I guess this probably might go back to superintendent. We were doing the, oh, God, the survey, the, yeah, and not the climate survey, the demographic survey. Do we know where we are with that?
I don't, but I can check with, I can check with them this week.
Okay, thank you.
This is just, I guess, food for thought. But you, you mentioned the, the teacher recruitment fairs, and I, you know, I saw the Verona table, the William Patterson one, and Verona had a bunch of cool prizes to give to teachers when they, when they would sit to do the mock interviews, which was pretty cool. So I didn't have any. But, well, yes, well, I probably won't. But my point is that these, and I'm sure you've seen the same thing, like, in the last 10 years, the amount of candidates that are at these things is, it just keeps going down and down and down and down. And it's, it's becoming more and more competitive, not only to recruit the teachers, but to make them want to work in your district as opposed to another district. Because, you know, what we might want to at least explore is the idea of how do we make it as attractive as possible to be a teacher in Verona. And the idea, especially in the elementary schools, I found where it's, it's, it's common for an elementary school teacher to have, you know, little ones at home. We maybe explore the idea that if you work in Verona, you could have your kids come to school in district, and you don't have to worry about, you know, carpooling or finding arrangement care for your home. I think it's, you know, in times of plenty, when there's lots of teachers to choose from, you don't have to be that generous and, and make the schools as attractive as possible to work for. But now, I think these, these, I'm sure at Montclair, it's going to be the same thing. It's going to be busy for an hour, and then it's going to get, become a ghost town pretty quick. And it never used to be like that. So I would just encourage the district to look to be as creative as possible with how we could attract teachers.
Mr. Cruz, we do offer reduced tuition for staff currently, but we could certainly talk about further reducing. It's not, it's really not a lot of money for them to
20%, so it's a significant, that basically the discount is, they're getting an 80% discount on the non-residents.
Yeah. So at that point, it might be, if we're not even generating that much income as it is with this, then it looks a lot better on paper to say, hey, this is a service that we offer to our employees because we value them. It's, you know, it's 100% free. But it's just, again, just food for thought to throw out there.
Thank you. So just going to make a quick statement on, before we go to public comments regarding public participation. So, you know, it affords an opportunity for the public to share thoughts. And we get a lot in emails. So sometimes we can kind of preview what might be coming to a meeting, and often we can't. But there's been some email flurry today. So I wanted to start this with just an, an overview of how we hire. And so we generally have three rounds of interviews. We post our jobs through Apple Track, which is frontline recruitment and hiring. We post to several different websites. We vet those candidates by a group of people that have access to the resumes. We then will have a selection session. We'll do a first round of interviews, which is more of a screening interview. Second round is much more formal. We generally use pre-prepared questions that we ask each candidate the same question. So we get a better picture of what those candidates know compared to each other. And ultimately, that second commit, second round That second commit, second round committee will decide on the top one or two that will be sent to my office for the final round. Before that happens, reference references are checked. And once I meet with either the top candidate or the top two candidates and make a decision on who we're going to negotiate salary. In the case where there is salary to be negotiated. Then that name of that candidate, if they accept our offer, goes on a public board meeting. At that point, it's forty-eight hours ahead of when the board is going to vote. If a community member or or it comes to our attention that there's a concern, if that concern is considered serious. We go back out and do the vetting process again. So just so that we're all clear on our hiring practices, that's how we do it. From directors down to temporary staff substitutes, et cetera. So with the the exception of substitutes, Dr. Lanzo is kind of in charge of doing that, but does organize that. So just wanted to go over that, given what we may have some comments this evening surrounding our hiring practices. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we're going to move forward on to public comment on agenda action items only. So only items that are listed on the agenda to be voted on can be discussed at this time. I invite the public to the podium. And at this time, you can please state your name, address, and you have a three-minute limit. So if anyone would like to come up and speak, please come up. Seeing none, we are going to move on to discussion items. Does any board member have anything that would? I know Mrs. Giuseppe, we're going to talk about.
Well, before we go into that discussion, because I think the firearms one is going to be a little more discussion. The things that I just wanted to talk about and speaking about getting emails and, you know, it is public. Think public comments, a couple of emails did come in and I think I would benefit everybody to have more clarification around how we do our AP. And the weighted. Oh, credit. Sure. We did get a couple of questions on that. So I think that's a good topic. It comes up here, you know, cyclical.
Yeah, and so I'm, these were decisions that have been made a while ago, but they're not decisions that I have not been involved in making elsewhere. It's not uncommon, the way we wait our AP. So our AP, let's go into how we calculate. Waiting. We don't do class rank here in Verona, but we do wait because. Some class, some colleges ask for it. So an honors course, an A in an honors course is a little is higher than an honors than an A in a CP or A plus in a CP course. And then A in a in an AP courses weighted higher than an A. And I don't have the the chart in front of me, so I'm not going to go into the actual math. If a student opts not to take the AP test. Then their waiting is dropped back to the honors level waiting. Some some school districts drop it back to a college prep level waiting. It just depends on what that that administration or that committee. That's been involved in that decides to do. I know in my prior district, we required that all students that took an AP had to take the test. And in that decision, we had done some research and it showed that students that are required to take the test. Your scores go up and students do better. And that's our goal for students. If you're going to take these AP courses, to at least have your college saves, your parents save some money on colleges and have those courses accepted. As freshman elective courses or whatever you need them to be. So in Verona, you have to sit for the test in order to get the advanced placement waiting. There was another piece in an email that I'm unsure about because I haven't, I never investigated it about. If you score under a certain number, you also don't get the waiting. I'm not sure whether that's accurate or not, so I we can reserve that until after I verify that. But Reese is going to tell me.
That's why it's great to have a student here.
Yeah, from my experience and from the experiences I've heard about achieving under a certain score, like a three or something had. From what I I've never heard of a student.
Yeah, I've never heard of it anywhere. So I'm, I just.
I haven't heard of that happening in Verona.
It wasn't, it wasn't apparent email, so I don't want to, I want to verify it before I say it doesn't happen. But I've not heard of that and I've not had any experience to even ask about that. The other is is factual, though.
Yeah, and and I was under the impression it could have changed that sitting for the test is actually part of the AP curriculum. So if you opt out of the test, you are actually not completing the full curriculum, therefore not getting the full weight.
Right.
The curriculum. And I think, um, or students, Reese, this might be something you would answer. Back in the day when my sons were here, instead of taking the study hall, they were able to audit a class. So if there was an AP class, they were just interested in the topic, but didn't want the pressure of actually doing the work instead of doing a study hall, they audited. Are students still have that option to audit class? Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not sure. I've not heard of that. I can like and look into that as well.
Yeah, that's, it was kind of an option instead of a study hall.
That's really interesting. I haven't heard of that option being like brought up to me like in like. In my experiences, like guidance counselor meetings, like whatever, 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 like from AP, from teachers offering the courses. I haven't heard of that. But I've heard of, like, I've had a teacher offer to have me like preview a course or something like that, like sit in on a class before, like, putting it on a schedule, but not audit. That's, that's really interesting.
About the AP, so I've been to high schools in so long, but. Is like forty percent of like the the high school, like a score report or performance report was. The percentage of kids taking the APs and the percentage of the kids that got like a certain score. Could that be a hidden reason? Is that that we we mandate or we have mandated the test just because. You you can't get the score if you don't take the test, then that might leave a a negative metric on something that. Is a subjective assessment anyway, at least in my opinion, to 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 value a whole school.
Yeah, again, I wasn't here when that decision was made, but it's not uncommon to make decisions that are going to improve your school report card score. So or your ranking score. There are a lot of school districts that we haven't had school rankings in quite a while now because of COVID. But one of, and you know, my favorite, you know, wink, wink, nod, nod, not my favorite is New Jersey Monthly because it's like chasing. It it's, it's, it's impossible to know what the metrics next year are going to be. So New Jersey Monthly came out every two years with the best schools in New Jersey ranking. And every two years, the metrics were different.
Yeah, but I guess, I I would just, I'm not saying we would do this. But I would, I would hate to see our district, or even if we did in the past, make decisions based on. A a magazine catering towards real estate agent advertisements.
I agree with you, yes.
When, when, when when that test might not necessarily be the best thing for for a particular child to take. And I would just encourage the district, I'm not saying we didn't, I noticed your first year, but to to revisit the idea of, you know, what's best for all of our kids. And what's best for an individual kid versus what's best on this performance report that no one really, let's be real, how much, how many people really look at it? In 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 reality, right? So that's my point.
Well, I I'll tell you that there are, in my mind, the reason for taking AP is there's a lot of research that shows students that take. At least one AP course during their high school career are more successful in college. And those are the things that we should be encouraging kids, you know, one of my favorite. My eighth grade speech in the past has always been to the eighth graders, you know, you're not going to do an intellectual chin up if you don't put the bar above your head. Right? So getting kids to know their potential and to do that academic stretch. Is important and taking that rig, that more rigorous course. So we have a lot of information available to us. Mr. Cogdon and I were just talking with Mrs. Ackerman about AP potential. So we give the PSAT. And MSQT, the National Merit Qualifying Test, to all of our tenth and eleventh graders. From that, not only do our kids get a preview of how they may do on SAT and how. And then for those students that score really highly, get entered into that merit scholarship comp competition. We also get something called AP potential from that. So they look across the board and our counselors can sit down to a student and say, you know what? Based on your PSAT ten or your PSAT eleven. You really have a potential of scoring a four or better in AP Statistics or AP Biology, whatever it is that that has predicted them. And a student may not have thought that. They may have thought that course outside of their reach. And so it it gives us a picture of the potential that students have to do well on these more rigorous courses. Now, I would go on to say we need to have more dual enrollment courses here, which are not tied to college board. And the kind of money machine that that generates, right? Because that's really a money-making organization. And look to see our colleges and universities in the area that will partner with us and provide college credit with the transcript. Based on courses that we're offering here in our school. And we only have a couple. We have Supa Court, we have a couple of Supa courses. We are looking into. Getting William Patterson or Montclair. We had, we do have some students that leave our campus and go to Montclair for coursework. Unfortunately, the way that's set up, they're not considered dual enrollment. Because Montclair is not a provider in high school. So. Yes, so and the and the courses aren't offered here. But our college prep English four class is a dual enrollment course at Seton Hall University. So we need to sell that because for three hundred dollars, our students could be getting credit at Seton Hall University. And a transcript from Seton Hall University that can transfer to any college that they go to. And we have very few kids that take, our families that take advantage of that to three thousand dollar course if you took it at Seton Hall. And it costs our students three hundred dollars to get those three credits. So we do have a couple of programs, but we we should be offering more. And that way you get the rigor that's available to our students. Without that. AP hanging over them if they're if they're nervous about AP or they don't want to take the AP test.
I have a quick question. So when, when would students be and families be educated? You know, as the difference between a dual enrollment or AP, when does that typically happen?
It should, in a perfect world, in eighth grade, seventh grade, as you're starting to prepare. And that's not true of most school districts. Definitely ninth grade, when you meet and and when you do your meeting with your student as they come in to ninth grade to register. I know things changed this year and things have been very disrupted since COVID. So I know the kids are registering, the eighth graders are registering this week. They are not sitting down with parents. There's a meeting at a Zoom meeting setup. And I'm just kind of feeling my way here, so I'm not quite sure how things have ever been done and why they're doing them differently. But we're definitely having those conversations about. You know, where do we, when do we provide that information to parents? And when do we ask kids to really be self advocates and make those decisions kind of independently?
And like, where's the counselors role in ensuring that they're kind of circling back to it?
Yeah, and and Mrs. Ackerman, who just started last year, is a highly competent school, a director of school counseling. And is really understanding of what our counselors need to know. Now, having said that, our high school counselors are new. They're all relatively new. They're very conscientious and very hardworking. We we have to come together as a a group of administrators and counselors. And say, what do they need to know about our programs? What do we need to be able to tell students so that they can make informed decisions? Because there's not a lot of choice here at the high school. We we have a lot of choice and we don't have a lot of choice. So we have. Few electives, art electives, we're trying to offer those music electives for next year. We have some social studies. Anyone that saw my state of the state of the district saw like one or two, one or two, one or two, a whole bunch in social studies. And then not a lot of choice. So we, and I've been in classrooms where there's thirty-four, thirty-five students. That's not optimal for anybody, not for the teacher, not for the students. So but again, that's a staffing issue and a room issue, a space issue. But to get back to your question, we should be educating our students at least about that. And and in my mind, they're our parents early on. Yeah.
Reese, get on that.
Yeah. Your experiences may be a little different than what's happening for our eighth graders now, because I said it changed a little bit.
And like COVID year and stuff. So like going from like night, so like the eighth to nine, from like, what's going on there? But uh. In terms of the dual and the Montclair, like off-campus dual enrollment, there have been like informational sessions, like periodically throughout the year this year as well. And just a quick question on that. When you say more dual enrollment, do you mean in like the style that Supa courses are offered where it's like on campus with a VHS teacher?
Yes. Yes. So it would be showing a college or university in the area. They very often ask for syllabus. They ask for some of our assignments, some of our lesson plans, some of our assessments to gauge the rigor. And then they decide whether or not they're going to offer college credit through for our high school.
To to do that, does the teacher of on the dual enrollment course need any special or additional certifications?
It's it really, it's, it's going to be different on a case from case basis. In my history, we have not, we, no school that we paired with required anything more than. They like to see it strategic and at least teaching. But I've seen school districts say, okay, this person's qualified enough. We had a journalism teacher that did not have a master's degree, but was phenomenal. And they they gave us credit for journalism, so. Yeah, so we just really need to create that platform to get colleges to see what we're doing here and offer to support us in that endeavor.
Thank you, anyone? Any other? Yeah.
So I'm going to actually defer to Mrs. Freski for the gun safety discussion, because you kind of have more knowledge than I do about this organization. Be safe, is that what it is?
Well, so to put it in context, while we were interviewing and transitioning from Dr. D'Onicio to. Dr. Fenari to Ms. Giuseppe. We had gotten an email from somebody from an organization called Be Safe For Kids. Which advocates for firearm safety in homes. And it's more about educating families in the communities and students. On firearm storage in the house. Statistically. Homes that have unsecured firearms in them increase exponentially the chance of an unintentional. Accident often ending in a tragedy. So this organization is, like Dr. Miss DiGiuseppe said earlier. Not gun control or a political issue. It is really more about the way we educate our children on. Health issues and safety and drugs and alcohol with the DARE program and, you know, mindfulness. It's just another safety opportunity. And in the. Address of the State of the Union, I'll call it, of the schools, there was a whole slide on safety and security. And the things that we have done to date to keep our schools safe. With access controlled entrances and our internal surveillance cameras and external cameras. And we have lockdown magnets and window covers. And this is just kind of an extension of letting people know. Particularly, New Jersey recently became a concealed carry state. So according to our Verona Police Department, applications for firearm permits have gone up tremendously. In the last couple of years, particularly during COVID. So now, out of those applications, you really don't know who actually, how many were accepted. And how many homes in our district do have a firearm in them. So it's just about people learning safe precautions. On how to store that and keeping firearms out of the hands of children. So this Saturday, New Jersey School Boards, they started this task force about a year ago. Saturday morning, they had a New Jersey School Boards Association, an executive level of all the county leadership. And they did release the full, their final report. The final report is a public report. It's on the New Jersey School Boards Association website. So if any parents are interested, it's a fifty-six page report. And it gives a lot of recommendations on how to share this information with community members. One of their suggestions is, you know, in the home packet, V Mac actually has something on their homepage. Because they have the safe homes pledge that families are able to sign up for. And it actually is mentioned there as well. And they do have recommended language on a resolution that a school, if they choose to adopt a resolution regarding gun safety. It would just be saying that we as a district recognize the need for educating awareness around. Safety in the firearms realm and putting that information out. And they give suggestions that it might go out in the beginning of the school year packet, something that people sign off, yes, I read this, I'm aware. So it's not invasive of anybody's prob, um, property and what they have in their home, but it's just giving everybody an awareness and being mindful of, you know, you're hosting children or you have children in your house and you want to keep things as safe as possible. Um, so I would suggest as uh, you know, board members, obviously, you shared it with all of us. I got it several days ago because I'm on the executive level um, at the county. So it was emailed to me. I did read most of it. Um, I didn't get through all fifty six pages, but there are hyperlinks in it. And like I said, it is public. It's on the New Jersey School Boards Association website. So anybody can go and read through it and um, have the same information that we do. So I would highly recommend everybody to really be familiar with it. And from what I've read, and I believe you spoke to Chief Kieran, and I think he um, is
He's very in favor.
In favor of this as well.
Yes. Yes.
So I would, you know, my, my recommendation as a board would be to look at the sample resolution and decide if we do want to move forward with um, something like that. You could tailor it to the needs of your own district. And go forward. They, they go as far as giving um, some curriculum, like folding, there's lesson plans, like to fold into, you know, health curriculums. And it's broken down by elementary, middle and high school. So it's just an interesting thing to read through.
So I'm not, I'm not philosophically opposed to a resolution, but the sample resolution that they give on their website, when you click the link, number one, it's a dead link. You have to actually like do the hard way to get it. But uh, there's three things that I think that we might want to really look at um, and determine whether we want to edit or amend. The first is that resolved that the board directs the superintendent to create an appropriate letter that explains the importance of secure firearm storage, storage, and the legal obligations of parents and guardians to protect minors from accessing the responsible, except accessing irresponsibly stored guns. I'm okay with the superintendent forwarding a letter from an expert on someone that's uh, in the field of gun laws or forwarding information from someone that's an expert on the field of, of gun safety. But none of us, none of us, when we voted for Diana to be, to be our superintendent, asked her any questions about her expertise in firearms and gun safety. So I, I, I think that's something where we don't want to be obligated to, to that. And we're not going to evaluate her on, on her, her expertise in that. Uh, I think the second thing is that uh, it says that the letter be included in the annual registration materials at each school site be available at the offices of the school principal, the school nurse and the guidance counselor. I think if we send this letter out, that's wise, but I don't think we want to put ourselves in an obligation to put this information in every office that a kid or a parent's kind of, going to go to. I think it's a little overkill. Uh, and the second, uh, the third part of the resolution, it says that the board and the superintendent will continue to inform parents throughout the community about the importance of firearm safety and safe gun storage. So as far as, I'm, I'm a board member. I've never picked up a gun. I don't own a gun. I never fired a gun. I have zero interest. I don't have any information to give anyone about gun safety or, or I don't know anything about it. Um, so I don't think we want to put ourselves in that. Um, and if we want to put that, you know, it, once a year, there are certain points a year, the superintendent will forward message or distribute message from experts in the organization. That's fine. But again, I don't think that, you know, the superintendent should have to create all this stuff to send out. So that's my opinion. But philosophically, I'm, I'm with you, Lisa, that I, I think it's not a bad thing for us to look into, to consider doing.
Yeah. And that resolution is just really a sample and then you tailor it, you know, to your own needs and your own community. Because I agree. I don't think anybody sitting up here, I don't want to speak for anybody. I don't think we have any firearm experts on our board. So I think it would be done and can be done in conjunction, you know, with our town council and with our um, Verona Police Department.
And I, I just want to say that I, in, in, I agree with a lot of what Chris has, has said, you know, and, and just, you know. I get touchy when we talk about anyone other than a lawyer telling anyone what legal obligations they have. Um, that just makes me a little, like I said, a little squeamish about that. Um, it, it seems like we can utilize a lot of language that we probably already have through BMAC or through other um, avenues around drugs and alcohol. Um, you know, I think we've done a good job educating um, about the dangers of drug and alcohol and, and making sure things are, are kept away um, minors. You know, I, but like I, I agree with that. And I do, I do also share the idea that, you know, it's a little overkill where we have to post it and how often we have to post it. I, I don't want to put us in, in a situation.
I mean, they're just recommendations. I mean, everything in here is recommendations. None of it is obligating anybody to do anything.
No, so I did, I did see when we, I, I would vote to draft something like this. I, you know, I, I don't think that this is um, again, it's very politically neutral. No one's, it's, it's information. It's saying, this is a problem. This is something you can do. No one is going to be knocking on your door asking you if you've done it. We're just saying, here's the information. We hope you take it under advisement and, and, you know, move on with, with life. Um, so.
I think I, I, I'm just going to kind of echo that. I think also, um, I just kind of was able to look through even at some of the lesson plans. And I think, you know, sending a message out and saying that we're going to work collaboratively with the Verona Police Department is one thing. And I think having it written into curriculum or, you know, offering teachers to, to teach this, I think in a way is irresponsible. So I think that when we're, you know, thinking about how this rollout should be, I think that it should be more of, or at least I would like to see it as more of a collaborative effort with the Verona Police Department, who we will follow their lead because they are the experts and we have the children. It's our job to keep them safe with us and, and work with families. But I just think that, you know, that teacher curriculum part of it made me feel a little uneasy because I think that it's not the appropriate place. Yeah.
Thank you, Reese.
So I agree that like, of course, information rollout is always, information rollout is always a good thing and it's, it's, it's a priority. Um, when it comes to the like teacher curric, and I agree that posting it everywhere, at some point it becomes white noise. And you can't like inundate people with stuff because then they just stop noticing it altogether. When it comes to the teacher curriculum aspect, it's yeah, that, that I'd need, that I need to think of because of course you can't expect teachers to do everything and teach everything. And it, if it were even to be considered, it'd have, it'd require professional development and it, it'd be an extensive effort. So I, I think that should also be brought into consideration as well. Overall, i- it never hurts to teach. It never hurts to give students the information, even if it is from the like newsletter like rollout standpoint as well.
Yes, I, I agree with the curriculum piece significantly. We are asked by the legislature to teach too much every year and there's more pending legislation there as well. Not on this, but on other stuff.
Yeah, I did. Thank you, um, Mrs. Freshy for the presentation, discussing this as well. And I agree with everyone up here as well as that I think, you know, drafting a resolution, a resolution that fits our needs as a community and as a board. Um, we can do and, you know, speak with the chief as to what we're, you know, what we're going to address. But again, we don't want to put this out everywhere and overkill because like you said, Reese, people see it and then stop paying attention when it's too much. So I think it's something we could address and look into, but you know, tailor it to our, our needs.
You could certainly have it available. We don't do paper anymore anyway. We don't post things.
Right.
Yeah, website.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So thank you. Looked at it more of too, is just awareness, especially because this is a hot topic across the country. And every time you turn on the news, it's a new tragedy.
Anyone have any other discussion items or comments to make before we go?
I just want to thank the, the lacrosse coaches. They brought a whole bunch of kids to Baltimore this weekend. Um, gave me a free weekend without a kid, which is nice, but um, it's such a big project to do and it's, it's such a headache to do and logistically to organize it. So just the fact that we have coaches that, you know, care so much means a lot to me. So thank you.
And a quick note from my part, um, Ms. De Giuseppe, I've seen the like school website and it's like the updates that have been made, like structurally, it's looking great. It's much easier to use. It's fantastic.
Right, Mr. Mr. Belash, we're trying. In my spare time.
You, everyone. Okay, we're going to move on to.
And I found an answer to the audit question. So the course audit policy, uh, just, it's very simple. It says, in the event that a student in an AP or honors course has no lower level to drop into and already has a study hall in their schedule, they may audit the course, but must remain in the course for the remainder of the year. An audit of an AP or honors class may be accommodated until five days, may only be accommodated until five days after the marking period. One interim grades are posted. And the student receives a pass or fail grade, will not earn any credit.
Okay, so we are going to go on to our resolutions. Um, I need a motion to approve our minutes. Um, we had a special meeting on March first, confidential and regular public meeting on March fourteenth, twenty twenty three. And another special meeting on March fifteenth of twenty twenty three. So I need a motion to approve resolutions, number one.
Those special meetings were the strategic planning.
So moved.
I'll second. Second, motion by Mrs. Freshy, second in front of Mrs. Virzella. Any discussion? Mr. Cruz, if you can please call a roll.
Sure. Ms. Walker?
I'll abstain.
Um, Mrs. Virzella?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Freshy?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to uh, resolutions for personnel. I need a motion to approve resolutions one through one point six. Motion. Motion by Mrs. Virzella, second, second by Mrs. Freshy. Any discussions? Mr. Cruz, if you can, please call a roll.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Virzella?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar? Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Freshy?
Yes.
We have, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to education, I need a motion to approve resolutions one through three. Motion by a motion, Mrs. Virzella, motion, I will second. Any discussions? Mr. Cruz, if you can call a roll?
Before you call a roll, I just want to point out that the um, Board of Education meeting dates is, uh, make sure you check it because it's the, it's the June meeting, wasn't it? It's the June meeting change.
Thank you.
What, what day do we pick?
June twentieth.
June twentieth. That's a great day.
I'm good.
Tuesday. Mr. Walker?
The June twentieth, yes.
Mrs. Virzella?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Freshy?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to special education, I need a motion to approve resolutions one to three point one. So moved. Motion by Mrs. Freshy, seconded by
A second.
Mrs. Ferrera, any discussions? Mr. Cruz, if you can, please call a roll.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Virzella?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Freshy?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Moving on to athletics and co-curricular, I need a motion to approve resolutions one dash one point, one point two.
I'll move it.
Motion by Mr. Walker, seconded, second by Mrs. Freshy. Any discussion?
I just want to say congratulations to DECA again for moving on. They're going down to Florida. That's awesome. That is great.
Mr. Cruz, if you can call.
Sure. Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Virzella?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Freshy?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Moving on to finance, I need a motion to approve resolutions one through four. Motion by a motion, Mrs. Virzella, second, second by Mrs. Freshy. Any discussion?
I just want to uh, point out resolution for child. As a former board member of child. I know that we had stopped giving grants um, out during COVID because of fundraising. Um, but I'm glad to see that the grants are back and that they um, they have expanded it a little bit to include uh, some of them, uh, general education uh, programs as opposed to just where we're strictly special education teachers. I, I like the, the idea of what they did with that.
Mr. Cruz, if you can call a roll?
Sure. Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Virzella?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Freshy?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you. Onto facilities, I need a motion to approve resolution number one. So moved. Motion by Mrs. Freshy, I will second that. Any discussion? Mr. Cruz, if you can, please call a roll?
Sure. Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Virzella?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Freshy?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we do have some addendum resolutions. So on to education. I need a motion to approve uh, addenda resolution number one. Motion by Mrs. Ferrera, seconded by second, Mrs. Freshy. Any discussion? Mr. Cruz, if you could please call a roll?
Mr. Walker?
This is the, uh, these are the policy, right? Yes, yes.
Now, this is education. Education for the
It's approval of a um, a USA, which is this.
Oh, that's cool. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's awesome.
Um, Mrs. Virzella?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
And Mrs. Freshy?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Onto governance and policy. I need a motion to approve resolu, addenda resolutions, number one. So moved. Motion by Mrs. Freshy, seconded by I will second. Any discussions?
I have, I have something here. I have a quick question. So I, I pulled up, I believe it's policy uh, two, four, two, five. This is for the virtual instruction. I read through it. Last, at the last meeting, we briefly discussed. Um, I, I believe it was this policy where students would have the capability of of logging on if they were home.
It actually wasn't a policy. It was just a discussion that we had during the policy committee.
Because I didn't see it in this policy and I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't just missing it.
No, it was just a discussion that came up during the policy committee.
Okay.
It is not a part of this.
Because I, I reread it and I, I didn't know if I was losing my mind because they didn't see it in here. And I'm like, I know we discussed it. Okay, that was it.
Now, this is just language from the state.
Thank you.
Any other discussions on that? Thank you, Mr. Cruz, if you could please call a roll?
Sure. Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Virzella?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Freshy?
Yes.
Motion carried.
On co-curricular, I need a motion to approve resolutions one dash one point one, addenda resolution one dash one point one. So moved. Motion by Mrs. Freshy, seconded by, a second, Mrs. Ferrera. Any discuss, discussions? Mr. Cruz, if you can.
Sure. Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Virzella?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Freshy?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Now we are moving on to our public comment session. Or if anyone in the public would like to come to the podium, please state your name and your address and you have three minutes.
Good morning. My name is Margaret Acosta. I'm a sophomore at Verona High School and my address is one oh two Grove Ave. Service to my community is important to me. I'm a volunteer at the Verona Community Garden where I help with the garden lifecycle, including taking care of the middle school science learning beds. The HBW students learn about growing their own healthy foods. The garden is a place where residents gather, talk, exchange gardening tips and relax. It also allows people who live in apartments to grow their own food. Everyone is welcome. Unfortunately, there isn't enough space to provide residents with enough planning beds. Unfortunately, there isn't enough space to provide residents with enough planting beds. Each, each year, there is a lottery so people can win their spot for the season. This year again, there were more applications than planting beds available. We simply need more space to expand our garden. I would like to ask if you could please consider an expansion to the community garden so more residents can enjoy it. Thank you for your help and for your time.
Who owns that property? Is it, is it the board?
It's board property, but I do, good news is that we already approved an expansion. I think it got put on hold during the whole discussion of the new police station building. But that was something that we had already approved for expansion. You're welcome.
Thank you so much for coming. It was, I mean, I know how hard that is, so.
Yeah, and thank you for your service.
Yeah, thank you. And I don't know if you know, but the high school does have a greenhouse that can be used. That's great. Awesome.
There are greenhouses here.
That's a great question. Right off the science wing, they have a full working greenhouse that several years ago, they put another like twenty or twenty-five thousand dollars into fix it and revamp it. It's awesome.
Wasn't it one of your children that started that program years ago?
Yeah, one of, one of my sons was very interested in gardening and horticulture, found the greenhouse very defunct and without asking any permission, kept going in there fixing it up, doing planting. And when he got it to a certain point, addressed Mr. Cisa, who was the principal at that time. And Mr. Cisa went to the board and the board revamped it, and it was in full swing for several years. And then when he graduated, I don't know if any other students continued to use it, but it's an amazing feature. It's really unique for Verona to have that.
Check that out.
I just want to say I don't recommend that process.
Right, right, right.
Better to ask for forgiveness than permission sometimes, so.
If you have not been to the community gardens over at HBW, they are beautiful.
Yes, thank you so much for coming out. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to come up?
Hi, good evening. Maureen Walker, eighty-five, Linwood Road. I just want to say how wonderful the addition of the student representative is to the board. Reese, you are fantastic. This is wonderful. In the same vein, that's very good job, honey. I like to say, continue with this, encourage your friends, and I'd love to see what you're going to do in the future.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Walker. I agree. I agree. Reese is a, she's a fantastic addition. So, and I do encourage more students to get involved. All right, so our next scheduled meeting will be held on April eleventh twenty twenty-three, beginning with confidential session at six P M and public session at seven P M in the Verona High School Learning Commons. I need a motion to adjourn our meeting. It is eight seventeen.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mrs. Freshy. Seconded, again, by Mrs. Ferrer. All in favor?